Good evening. Today is Monday, March 12th, 2018. Welcome to a special meeting of the Board of Education. We just have a little bit of brief business to take care of, and then we're going to go right into our scheduled Board Workshop where we have two presentations this evening. If we could start, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening. I apologize. We did just come from executive session, and we did have a lot of business to cover after our meeting from last week was canceled due to our power outage. In reference to the power being out, I did want to thank the community for their patience with us, our administration, our teachers, our staff, really for their cooperation. It was a very difficult couple of days, and I just want to thank everyone for all they did. Last, when was that, Pete? Monday? What day is today?
Monday.
Today's Monday, so Thursday, when school opened, I'm a little confused with our days, Thursday morning, Peter and I did walk Cottle School with our custodial staff, Mr. Albano and Lee Lu, and I did want to thank, really, the custodians who did such a fine job, really, who were in our schools 24/7. They stayed all night to make sure that our school was safe, and because our fire alarm system was out and everything was out, so I just did want to give a special thank you to them. I did also want to say that while we were there, we met at 8:30, we were on a two-hour delay. School opened at Cottle 10:30 that morning, and I was just so impressed when I saw teachers and support staff coming to school while we were there, 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, to start their day. And, you know, because they had been out of this classroom for several days, and they were there to get a head start and preparing for their students to come back, and it just really touched me, because I just really felt like, wow, you know, that is just a really special on their part to feel that they made the effort, and others who I'm sure would have as well, but the weather was just really not cooperating last week at all for us. So again, thank you to everybody for that and their patience, and I'm sure Carl will talk a little bit more about that as well. Normally, we do not have comments at our special meetings, but if any Board members did want to add anything this evening, please feel free. Cynthia?
Rob?
Dash, be fair. Okay. I did want to, because I just don't think that there is any possible way we could start a meeting. This is our first meeting since February 14th, and I just felt that it just would not be right to acknowledge the tragic events of what happened in Florida, Parkland, Florida, on that day. I will tell you that since February 14th, I have been on the phone with the superintendent every single day discussing safety in our schools. It is our top priority. Unfortunately, last Monday, the 12th, we did have a consultant, our safety consultant, scheduled to attend, and because that meeting was scheduled and he had a conflict, he could not be here this evening, but will be here next week. We do have much to discuss in terms of safety and security in our buildings. Much of that conversation will take place at our meeting next week when our consultant is here. I do want to open anything up to the community. If they have anything that they would like to bring to our attention, to please call us, email us, and be in touch with the superintendent or any of the Board members. I want to thank those who have offered their suggestions, their thoughts. It has been very helpful as we make decisions moving forward.
Michelle, I just wanted to add on that note, because I know that a lot of people out there are using social media as a platform for that, but unfortunately, I mean, I never look at it. I just heard that they were. It is much more beneficial and helpful if you do reach out to us so that we know, because I don't know how many of, I know that I don't go on, but I'm just hearing it. So it is more beneficial that you reach out to the Board.
Can I just add one thing, too? Just, folks should just be mindful also-
Yes.
-when discussing the issue of security on social media, that we're being cognizant about putting our vulnerabilities out there and talking about what's, you know, where we have soft underbelly. We want to have a discussion, we want to talk about it. Let's just be smart about how we do that in terms of putting it out to the greater public.
Thank you, Pete. And I did promise at the last meeting that at every meeting between now and April 10th, I would remind the community that on April 10th is our vote on our capital project. I urge everyone to please make sure you are registered, you know where to vote. All of that information is on our district website. Please be in touch with our district clerk, Lauren. She is more than happy to help anyone who may have any questions about whether or not they can vote, where to vote. It is very, very important. Today, I believe, today, our newsletter was delivered, let's like knock on wood, to White Plains for bulk mail, and it will be in the hands of our community probably by the end of this week. There are two dates. Carl, could you give the two dates? I'm sorry, because I don't have them off the top of my head, but there are two dates where we will be conducting a tour of the building. I will get you the dates in a minute. I'm sorry.
I need to look them up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Get back on.
But there is an evening date, and there is an early morning date. And we encourage everyone in the community to please come out. That information is also on the newsletter. So when you receive the newsletter, especially for members of the community who do not have children in the school district and are not familiar with the conditions of the district at this time, I urge you to please come out for that. Again, the bond is for security improvements for eight new classrooms on the second floor of the new wing, to create a second floor of the new wing of the Cottle Building, for infrastructure updates, and those include our new fields. I'm sorry, Carl, the dates are-
Okay, so we will be conducting one daytime tour, and that will be held on Tuesday, um, excuse me, Wednesday, March 28th at 9:00 a.m. So if you are not able to make that one, there also is an evening tour, Tuesday, March 27th at 7:00 p.m. Now, these dates will also be included in the newsletter, which should arrive home, as Michelle said, you know, by late this week and if not early next week. And we do ask the daytime tour, March 28th, that you call my office and just confirm your attendance. We're trying to maintain manageable numbers. If need be, we will break people up into two or three groups. We're trying not to be disruptive to the learning process. But we welcome having you join us on a tour and see firsthand the needs of the building and what we want to accomplish with the bond.
Thank you, Carl. Carl, did you have any other comments before we started our meeting?
Michelle, you were very thorough in your intro, so I'm going to hold my comments, and there will be some safety and security discussions this evening through our two presentations.
Okay.
First one focused on the bond itself and the construction phase, and people have asked, how will you keep children safe? You'll hear about that this evening. And then we also have integrated into the budget some enhancements to safety and security, which you'll hear about later, later in the program.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll start with the business meeting. We're going to start with business of the Board. Number one, call for school safety. Whereas the safety of all children in our schools is of paramount importance, and whereas the proposed 5% reduction of the current federal education budget would include $425 million in cuts to mental health and school safety programs, such as school emergency response to violence program and project prevention grants, and whereas 17 students and staff members were tragically killed and many others were injured as a result of a school shooting in Parkland, Florida on February 14th, 2018, and whereas in the past five years, 439 students and staff members have been shot in more than 239 school shootings across our country, and whereas a need for greater access to mental health services for students and families in our schools and communities was ranked as a top funding priority by the majority of superintendents in New York State, and whereas we believe that every child has the right to a safe school environment that has an appropriate level of security as determined by our community, and whereas a reasoned and rational approach to addressing gun violence and increased access to mental health service for students and families in our schools and communities are essential elements of a safe school environment, and whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District fosters civic discourse and promotes student understanding of government and current issues, and whereas a coordinated effort at the federal and state levels boosted by law enforcement and community engagement is needed to change the paradigm and protect our communities and our schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District calls upon the New York State Assembly, New York State Senate, to implement a reasoned and rational approach to address gun violence and prioritize funding and resources for increased access to mental health services for students and families in our schools and communities, and resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District implores federal and state leaders to take immediate action to provide additional funding to schools and communities for adequate mental health, social and guidance services, and resources for the purpose of prevention, support, and response. Provide funds for districts to upgrade their facilities if internal safety audits find there is a need for improvements. Provide funding for essential security personnel and related professional development for all staff as determined by the local school district, and resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District affirms that the civic engagement of students who are speaking out for school safety needs to be heard, and resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District opposes any reductions in federal or state funding for education that would cut mental health or school safety programs, and further be resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District calls upon the Governor, New York State Assembly, and New York State Senate to address gun violence and provide support for local school districts to promote school safety. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Dash, discussion. I just want to say that this is a resolution that came out by the Westchester and Putnam School Board Association of which we are a part of, and it really is our way of sending a organized message to Albany that, you know, not only are we against any cuts in funding, but that we are looking for additional funding for all those things mentioned. And that's it.
And I-
Go ahead, Carl.
No, no, and I will just say the lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents has some very similar language, and we are doing advocacy at the state level also to make sure funding is not decreased, but the opposite, that there is increased funding to support our schools and communities.
All in favor? Thank you. Number two, approve a stipulation of settlement. Be it resolved that the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized and empowered to execute the stipulation of settlement concerning student number 11414, and the superintendent is further authorized to take all action necessary to effectuate the terms of this agreement. Is there a motion?
Rob, second.
Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number three, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with Dr. Joel Wolfson for psychiatric evaluations at a rate of $350 an hour effective February 26, 2018, through June 30, 2018, in an amount not to exceed $5,000. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Dash, all in favor? Discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor? Number four, appoint stipends. Resolve to appoint Peggy Velocchio and Robert Trehe as Tuckahoe High School Science Olympiad co-advisors for the 2017-18 year at a stipend of $2,834 each. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion. All in favor? Number five, appoint a secretary. Resolve on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Christine Lorenz to the position of secretary effective March 2nd, 2018, with a probationary period of 52 weeks from March 2nd, 2018, through March 1st, 2019. Ms. Lorenz shall be assigned to the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School, and placed on step four of the CSEA salary schedule. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion.
I'll just say to the Board, Ms. Lorenz was the first choice candidate to fill a vacancy that was created when one of our clerical staff received a promotion and was relocated to the Cottle School. What we did is we took this opportunity to redesign the position, and Westchester County Civil Service approved a secretary title which enables us to have the person handle a wider range of responsibilities. So this particular person, the job responsibilities have been redesigned for her to support our assistant principals' office as well as health, phys ed, and athletics. So we're looking forward, and the individual seems very competent, so we're looking forward to good work from her.
All in favor? Number six, approve a leave. Resolve to approve an unpaid leave of absence for Christine Lorenz from March 2nd, 2018, through March 19, 2018. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion.
So this may appear to be a bit confusing, because we just appointed someone, and now we approved the leave. This individual had a prior commitment. Under Westchester County Civil Service laws, there was an expiration date to the test that she took, which enables her to assume this position. So the county recommended that we basically hire her. She's not being paid for the leave. You don't get a paid leave up front. Down the road, she's entitled. So there's no cost to the district, but it's a technicality, basically, to satisfy civil service regulation.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, I'm not going to close the public meeting, because we will be going back into executive session after our presentations. We do have two presentations this evening. The first one, did you want to talk about them a little bit first, Carl or?
Sure, I'll begin, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Lu. So Calji Construction is here with us this evening, and they manage a wide range of different construction projects. They've done many school districts, also libraries and other municipalities. They've done work with the architectural firm that we have working on our project. So what we decided was to move forward. Again, people may know, we're trying to expedite this project so we can have, you know, an initiation of the building happen in the summer of 2019, particularly that second story on Cottle. So Ms. Lu and I had, you know, three construction companies that we interviewed. Calji really emerged as, in our opinion, the strongest candidate. They were incredibly well-prepared. They came in with an entire team and basically impressed us. We then, after that, checked references, and every reference was extremely positive. So Lee, if you want to add anything to that process?
No, we did ask Dominic Calji, who's the owner, the president of the company, to come in tonight to speak to the Board, to give a brief definition of what they can do to provide us services prior to the bond vote, as well as if the bond does pass and is approved by the community, how they would, excuse me, implement their services to help us move forward properly with making sure that we manage the bond process and the capital improvement properly. So-
So to be clear, you know, they have not been hired yet officially, so we are doing this in public and to be fully transparent, but the Board is meeting them for the first time. And then if we agree, then next week, we certainly can have a resolution prepared to hire them and have them work on our upcoming project. So Dominic, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to just give a little presentation to my company for the Board members who, really, may not know anything about us. We are one of the major construction management firms in the tri-state area specializing in public work projects. We are going into our 99th year. We provide all construction services from construction management, consulting, owner's representative, and in the private sector, we also still do some general contracting for hospitals and colleges in the area. As far as our role with the district right now, the three most important things are going to be the coordination, communication, and the control factors. Pretty much, right from the start of the job, we are involved with your architectural firm, especially in this particular phase, getting ready for the April 10th budget. Assuming the bond is passed on April 10th, April 11th or 12th, depending upon the architect, and we want to meet with him, and we want to get involved in going forward as far as getting into the design development. But once on board, we need to meet with him right away, because we want to be sure that that bond amount is comfortable. Right now, we feel it is, but we need to have more information on it. So we'd like to jump into that right away. As far as communication, we will be the liaison between the Board and the architect, vice-versa. Pretty much, everything goes through our company, and that continues throughout the whole construction process. And as far as controls, we'll get into the safety and the budgets and the scheduling as we get more in detail after this brief presentation. These are the typical services that we provide, anything from the bond acquisition where we are now, right through the pre-construction phase, which is all the scheduling and budgeting, the value engineering. We also get involved, of course, with the onsite full-time project management while the construction is going on. This will be a typical public job with multiple prime contracts. They will be contracted independently to the school district, but no inter-contractual relationship, and that's where we come in to manage and coordinate all their efforts and all their field activities. And then we take it right out through the owner's occupancy, and in some cases, probably not in this particular case, but in some cases where there's not a facilities management staff on hand, we'll take over that until they can hire somebody to take those reins. So it's the full spectrum, from the conceptual right through the move-in and facilities management end of it. These are some of our clients, the school districts. You can see, right now, we're in the same mode with Pelham School District. We're getting ready for a bond referendum on May for that school district, but we're, right now, we're at Pelham School District, Dobbs Ferry, and Lakeland School District. Libraries, we're about at four library projects out on Long Island. Locally, we're involved in Bedford on Police Facility, Peekskill Firehouse, Mamaroneck Firehouse, Rydebrook DPW. So the bulk of our work is all public work, multiple prime Wixlaw projects throughout the tri-state area. And basically, we come in with the shared goals of the owners. We want communication, we want strict budgets, we want safety, we want the project to come in on time and on budget, and we know on any project, there's going to be change orders. Nothing's 100%. And our role is to make sure that if there are change orders, they're priced properly, they're not part of the contract documents, and when we feel comfortable, then we make recommendations. But that's our role, to basically be the district's eyes and ears throughout the process of the project. And I'll open it up to, as far as addressing safety issues, I know that's a big concern. We had spoke with Ms. Lee and Mr. Albano when we had our interview, and one of our concerns, of course, is second-floor addition. What we propose is, we have to keep the children safe while the project is going on, of course, and the bulk of the work, the bulk of the critical work is going to take place over the summer, with the erection of the structural steel, the enclosure of the walls, the metal deck on the new roof, and our goal would be, by the end of the summer, to have the steel up, have the exterior wall, at least the steel studs and the sheathing, the exterior sheathing put on the exterior walls, and the roof on, and either a temporary roof, or we can get, or if we can get the permanent roof on, so we're watertight. And while that's going on, before the work even starts, we're going to have, in the contract documents, we'll work with the architect, but we usually prepare a construction implementation plan that goes out to the bidders, to show them where we want sidewalk bridges, where we want barriers, where we want fencing, where their laydown is going to be. At the three sides of the Cottle School right now, alongside with I, along the access on the, where the exit is over there, and behind, we're going to propose sidewalk bridges all around. We have to maintain that exit at the end. So you have a sidewalk there now. We figure we're going to have to pour an additional sidewalk close to the building, set up a sidewalk bridge, so the children can exit that building, and also, that's going to be our access for behind the building. So we're going to use that area there. It's about 28 feet wide. We want to put a temporary drive in there, which means, in addition to the sidewalk bridge going along that length, we're going to have a Jersey barrier and a fence to make sure vehicles don't get into the path of the children coming out. But as you can see, alongside with I, you have a lot of wires, so that's going to be difficult to erect the steel. We're proposing that, and this is an overhead shot, if you could see, on the right side is that area I was just pointing to, as far as where we want the trucks to come in. You have about 28 feet on the side yard, in the backyard, you have about 40 feet. So there's where we want to set up the crane to come in to erect the steel. And we may want to speak, we'll have to look at our distances and clearances, but we may want to temporarily remove or have an opening in the fence between your property and side with our country club to get the crane in there. And we want all the staging and all the erecting of the steel done from the backside, okay? That'll be safe for everybody. We don't have to worry about wires and other possible safety issues doing that. Also, since we're going to be abutting the rest of the school, there's going to have to be protection on the top of the existing roof on the other side while this work is going on. As far as the children themselves, they're going to be inquisitive and curious. Whenever they hear construction equipment, we all run out the meta. If you're a child at seven years old or a child at 60 years old, you're going to run out and take a look at equipment. So with the sidewalk bridges and creating the barriers coming out, the side door there, we should be able to separate the construction workers from the children. There'll be no construction workers going inside the building, up only until the second floor. That would be a separate access, separate ladder. There'll be a scaffold stairway and ladder system built in with the sidewalk bridge. That'll be how they can access. There'll be, of course, separate bathrooms on site. No construction workers will be allowed to go into the buildings for any type of bathroom or water or anything else like that. Typically, on our school projects, the contractors all and workers all have badges. They usually give our project manager on site a list of who's their permanent staff is, and we have them logged in. Anyone coming from a union hall are off before they even get to the site. They have to report to my project manager and get logged in. In addition to the regular physical safety that's going to be going on around the building, as far as with the contractors, at our weekly job meetings, we always have safety issues and safety talks, and we require them to go out and talk to their people about safety and report back to us. That's one of the requirements, for them to get their payment requests every month, that they show that they've done their safety, their safety toolbox talks, as we call them. But you also have the security vestibule that's going to be constructed inside. There, we had looked at it, and that would be, again, over the summer, but knowing that you may have summer school, that area there, we can completely isolate from the corridor side. You have entrances down at the corner, and that can be used for exiting and entrance to the children. So we should be able to block off that entire vestibule and complete that start to finish. Going back to the actual scheduling of the job, you have an existing roof on there now. Clearly, our goal would be to keep that existing roof on as long as we can, to maintain watertightness within the building. And from what we understand, your existing roof there now is a 9/16 metal deck, which should have the concrete fill on it. The records that we have going back, there was a study done in 1999, and from what we can understand, the concrete fill is there. So we have to, with the architect, determine what the load capacity is at that floor, and that will determine how the next floor, either we can go right over it, or there has to be a structure above that. I'm sure KGD has already looked into those, but we have to get involved with our thoughts on that as well. But that's pretty much the way we're looking at the initial start of this, of this project. Timing is going to be an issue, because you are going to have to go to SED, and we checked with them the other day, and at least just for the architectural end, they're about 20 weeks out. And they were using third-party to help their approval process, and they stopped it in December, but they picked it up again in February. So overall, we have to see how that ties back in at some point, probably after the first design development phase and the budget. Once it's approved, then the architect should be able to send that on to SED approval, and then pretty much, we sit and wait for the approval. But our goal is to get this project out to bid by next January, February, and have awards by the end of March. The ideal situation here- The ideal situation here would have awards at April and get the contractor started to at least start getting his structural steel shop drawings and get them approved. We talked about doing some preliminary investigation to pinpoint the column lines that are there right now to save some time, because the steel's got to be one of the first things that gets on this job site to make our schedule, the way we're looking at it right now. As far as the fields, we see no issue with those to be done over the summer of 2019. We had two athletic fields. One was a resurfacing at Dobbs Ferry School District, at the middle high school. We had to resurface their existing field. And that spring here was basically a couple of acres that had to be carved out in a new field, put in, plus a few hundred feet of massive concrete retaining wall. It was all done over the summer. So I'm not too concerned about that. Here, you have one field. Out here, that's being resurfaced, and then your field down across from Cottle is just being upgraded. So we think it can be done without any issues there. We would more than likely suggest with the architect that we keep that as a separate contract, so that the general contractor who's working on the vestibule and the addition is fully focused on that, and the site contractor is fully focused on getting the fields done. We don't want to mix those up. And as far as the infrastructure work, that is probably going to be ongoing from summer right through the end of the project. We had that just recently up at Lakeland High School, Lakeland School District, which has about, I think, three or four times the amount of schools you have. And through coordination, it worked well. We may have to put in the specifications here, that the contractors have to realize that some of the work may have to be done at off-hours or weekends, because that's all going to have to be coordinated with the school personnel as the infrastructure is changed and modified. And that's pretty much how we see the overall project. Sure.
Sir, can you speak at all about provisions for air quality while the work is continuing? After the main construction, after the still come summer 19, the work is continuing through how you ensure that the air quality for the kids in the below is remains good?
Well, the only thing to do there is, we'd have to have probably a monitoring service onsite that would take samples. We don't envision any issues. I mean, more than likely, there's probably going to be smells and odors from certain things. One of the reasons why we want to get the exterior sheathing walls up and try to preserve that existing slab as much as possible and put the new slab on, is that'll cut down on a lot of the noise transference. If we can get the steel up, the exterior partition, and if we can get the track down for the interior partitions before school starts, that would be helpful, because then, you know, there'll be less hearing of the hilted shotguns and things like that. But as far as the air quality, you know, we're going to have to have, with the sidewalk bridges, of course, they're going to be tarped on the side. Windows will have to be closed during the school year. But other than that, some air monitoring and some temporary partitions here and there that are needed to keep the dust out. But that's, you know, we'll have to have someone actually monitoring that. And as far as a quality report, we'd have to hire an actual company to do that.
And that's typical in the school constructions, though?
It can be. More often than not, we get more of the air monitoring when we're doing an abatement project, and there we have constant air monitoring, because there you want to know how many, you know, particles are in the air or anything else like that. So depending upon what your roof system is here, we have to investigate that. There may be some asbestos flashings and things. We don't know that yet. But typically, flashing material, the coal tar applied, still has asbestos in it. And if any of that's coming off, then we'll have to handle it properly.
You mentioned the security vestibule also being done during the summer.
Yes.
Were you also envisioning that being the summer of 2019 as well?
Yes, yes.
And do you envision that being completed by the time the school opens?
From the way we see it right now, we don't see any reason why. You know, we're looking at it, we don't have the details, but it seems like something that should be able to be completed.
Start to finish.
Yes.
Okay. The last question I have for you before I'll give somebody else a chance. I had the same question for the architects, but I think you're actually a better person to ask. You mentioned before about the workers having a badge.
Mm-hmm.
What type of checks do you do on those workers? Is there a background check? Is there some sort of?
Yeah, as I say, we ask the individual contractors to let us know who is, who's going to be your foreman, who's going to be your onsite superintendent. They usually have their key people. Anyone else coming in, they've got to give us some background on that, where they, you know, where they hired them from. They come from the union hall, fine. You know, usually those guys are somewhat vetted. But anyone off the street, of course, we can't, you know, we can't get involved in having those kind of, you know, those people on the job site. They have to have some kind of background with them. And typically, that'll come from the company that's hiring them.
Okay. So there is a sure, your company does make sure that the folks working on the set are not, you know, wanted felons or special offenders?
I wish I could tell you, we would have no idea of knowing that, what they're, if they have any criminal background or anything else like that, without getting involved with police departments or where they come from.
I thought there was a system where their driver's licenses could be run through.
That can be done. But we would have to, you know, that's something we would not know on that particular day. That's something that, once they come on, we would have to investigate that, or their company would, and then would have to go further. But typically, I would have to say, we haven't had a problem like that on any project, but you never know.
Okay. Was something we could talk about some more?
I had a question with, in regards to when they're doing the second-floor construction.
Yes.
So obviously, the kids would not be there when they're doing the steel and the walls and the roof, but will there be children in there when they're doing other types of work upstairs?
Well, yes.
And what types of work would that be?
Once the school, once the academic year in is started, at that point, we should be involved in the interior.
Which is?
Which is putting up steel studs, partitions, sheet rock, doing the HVAC work, doing the electrical work up above.
And that would be done during the school day while kids are in session?
Yes, yes. But they would be isolated from everything that's going on.
And what would the noise level be like, I guess?
Well, that's why with the exterior walls up and the sheathing and the additional concrete slab on top, we don't see that noise factor being a major issue. I mean, we've had roofing work going on at Dobbs Ferry School. We had other work, HVAC work going on. The noise didn't seem to be an issue, as long as there were, you know, barriers between. And this one here, you have a natural barrier, which is your existing roof slab.
I have a question about, as on the slide where it said, these are the things I wrote, budgeting, value engineering, cost estimating. So when we have the budget, it's given to us, the breakdown from the architect, and we're relying on his expertise.
Right.
And as you can imagine, you know, myself and many communities, we just think the numbers, like, they look outrageous, right, some of those? So when do we get a better idea of, you know, much closer to what those costs are? And if they're, you know, accurate estimates, if they're under, over, if there is room to, you know, what we're hoping, of course, is that they're all too high and
Right.
would give us room to do other things. So when would we know that?
Well, initially, as soon as we get on board, we would want to get with the architect and go through how he's budgeted for the bond right now. And I would assume at this point, he pretty much is working with either square foot prices or some kind of, you know, a generalization of numbers. And from that, we could tell whether he's on track or off track, because we have our own square foot numbers for all this type of work. But assuming that we see no problem there, and then the bond is approved, then he starts his design development. And that's when things finally get detailed. We finally start looking at sections, we finally start looking at elevations, we can start quantifying the project. And from our office, you will get a itemized breakdown of the entire job, from the demolition right down through the electrical and the site. Everything is itemized and is quantified. And we have our unit prices on each particular, not a general square foot, but right down to the cubic yardage, the linear footage, whatever the quantity may be. And that's how we get it down. In addition to that, we also, as part of our, we give you a summary of probable cost, which is our construction costs, and then also the project soft costs, which are your costs, your architect's fees, the CM fees, your testing inspection, your legal fees, your advertisement forbid fees. So with every budget from our office, you will get a complete bottom line, which your full exposure is. And that's, from that is where we start going forward, as far as value engineering. If there's any, anything in there that's throwing it out, that we may want to say, well, let's look at this, or maybe we suggest putting it in as an add alternate and keeping it in the bid, but separate from the base bid. And as bids come in, then we can see whether we can afford some of these things. But that's generally how it goes. So once on board, we go through the general with the architect right now, to make sure that what your bonding is right now is reasonable. And then from that point forward, then it's a complete detailed atomization. And typically, on this one here, he'll be going through his design development phase, and then the final construction would come back after the SED. If they make any changes, then we have to factor that in. But then, that would be your last check. Before we go out for bid, typically, you would get about three budgets from us before you go out to bid, three detailed budgets.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. For that second-floor construction
Yes.
while the kids are in session, how long do you estimate that it would take to complete it?
For the total project?
Not for the total project, after that thing is put on, and say in September, now they're doing work on that second floor.
Yes.
I'm just trying to think, is it going to last throughout the whole school year?
Well, that's what I was getting at. From the time the project starts in June of 2019, we're looking for completion of the second floor by the end of January, 2020.
All right, one more question on that. If it does seem to be that, whatever the noise level does interfere with construction, and I'm sure this is for you too, Carl, what's the ability to have them work after hours? And how does that change the cost of the project?
Well, obviously, it's going to change the cost of the project, because they're going to be figuring the project all on regular straight time. I mean, we could put wording into the proposal that contractors should allow for overtime work, but again, they're going to assume that the majority of their time is going to be our normal working hours. If we put it completely on overtime or weekend, then your number obviously is going to be inflated substantially.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Carl?
No, I think I just would like to emphasize, I may have some questions from the audience, but that the cost for CalG, construction management, is all part of the bond proposal that we're putting out there on April 10th. So there's no extra cost to the district. It's not out of our operating budget. It would all be part of the bond that is nearly $10 million, so cost is included.
And also, that when we took a look at the broad proposals for the amount of the bond, that was considered in as well, that we always had anticipated that there would be a cost for a construction management firm to help us manage the project.
And I think in listening to Dominic's level of expertise, our audience, our community would understand why it is necessary to have this expertise onsite. And Dominic, I know you probably said this, but I think it's worth emphasizing, someone from your construction management firm is onsite whenever construction is happening.
Yeah. The individual that I brought to the meeting was Andrew Laydlaw. Right now, he's my project manager on the town of Bedford Police Facility, and he was also handling the work prior to that up in the Lakeland School District. So he would be the one that would be assigned to this job. Looking at the way things are going by June of next year, that's when he would be ready to move right in, and he's here from day one.
Okay, great. Is there anyone from the community that would like to ask a question or come forward?
Just rough, I'd be curious, steel prices have gotten nuts relative to six months ago, or whenever we started kind of this project. Do we have a sense of what the original plan was from a spot price versus today?
No, and we haven't seen, I mean, since, you mean to talk about the tariffs?
Yeah, tariffs and then just the demand side.
Yeah, we haven't really seen any major shift in any of the steel right now in our projects. So, and I don't know what the tariffs may possibly cause. But, you know, once again, some of these things, in a general nature, seem like they may affect, but you're still going to be going out to bid in a very competitive market. And I know years ago, even with the gasoline and whatnot, we really didn't see major changes.
Roughly, where's it go for?
The steel?
Yeah.
Well, erecting the steel, we're usually up at about $1,200 or $1,300 a ton, but that's the way we look at it, furnished and installed.
Okay.
Thank you, Neil. Okay, so I don't think we have anything else. We will be meeting again next Monday, and we hope to have a resolution for the board at that time, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, nice to meet you. Thank you for attending tonight. Okay. Our second presentation is our first look at the budget for the 2018-19 school year. And that will be Lee and Carl.
Okay, so we'll get started on the initial budget presentation. So first of all, I'd like to thank our audience for joining us. This is a very important conversation. This is the first public rollout of the budget, but I would like to emphasize that this process started many, many months ago. Our staff goes through a very tedious process analyzing, probably, most importantly, personnel, because that is the largest expenditure. So we do something called projections, you know, based on programs that we have, numbers of students per grade level in different classes. And those conversations play out amongst the department people, with our administrators, building-level administrators, central office administrators, and of course, everything filters through our business official, Ms. Lee Liu. So the first half of this presentation, I will talk about more of the narrative and what we're trying to accomplish with this particular budget this year. And then the second half, I will turn it over to Ms. Liu, who will get into greater detail with the numbers and the tax levy. So to begin with, we have an outline, and by the way, all of this, and as we move through this process, all of this will be posted on the district website for you to refer to. So first, we start by just thinking of our goals. The high school this past year added one additional AP course, which was AP Computer Science Principles. That course, we're very pleased, it is run by Dr. Mosher, and we have an interest for next year, so we plan to continue and maintain 11 advanced placement courses at our high school. Second bullet is our strings program. Many of you may know that we have a very high-level music teacher. He was actually hired this year as a .6 strings teacher at the middle school. We've had so much success that we are having this program move into the high school. So students who are currently participating in strings will be able to continue that program in their high school years. Next, co-curricular athletics programs. You know, we've added over the past year many different programs. One example this past year was the senior internship program. Mr. Carlos Swannell runs that program. It's been very successful. We're running it again, and of course, we are keeping it in the budget because we value it. Also, with regards to athletics, we've really expanded the number of offerings. Student participation is up. And we've also, within our programs, maximized the amount of time that we could compete. Our athletic director always reminds me, if you'd like to grow a program and get better, you compete more. And it sounds pretty basic, but in the past, we weren't maxing out the number of games and competitions, and this year, we are doing that. The budget supports it. The fourth bullet is something that we heard a lot about last year from our community. We've had a lot of internal discussion and thoughtful discussion on this, but we are implementing a director of special education. Now currently, Dr. McDonald, who is our assistant superintendent, wears three hats, probably a lot more. The three main hats. One is that she oversees special education. The second is curriculum and instruction. And then the third area is technology, instructional technology. Now, the technology piece, it's hard to imagine this, but just five or six years ago, we had no wireless infrastructure in our schools. There was no one-to-one happening. Now, we could not think of, you know, school life without wireless infrastructure, without one-to-one, which is being utilized in every classroom. If there's ever a day or a couple of hours where it's down, you really understand how important it is to education today. So those responsibilities, not only have grown, I would say they've probably grown exponentially in the area of instructional technology. And we do believe there is a need. With regards to special education, you will see later, we have grown as well. I think we've done something that was very smart strategically. I think we've done something that was very smart strategically, I think benefits our children here in Tuckahoe with special needs, but also was smart financially, and that is, we had many students, years back, we had 27 students placed out of district. Today, Dr. McDonnell, I believe the number is seven or eight. So wherever possible, we don't have a program for every child, but whenever possible, we brought children back to our district and we created some programs to support their needs. So instead of sending money out to neighboring districts or other schools, we've kept our students here. That is something that is greatly appreciated by parents. You know, we believe our children, if we can service them here with special needs, we should do so. It's very good to have children here if they have a sibling in the school, families are not split between two school districts, so we see it as a win-win. So we have hired some additional staffing to support the programs, but I think it's been a win-win situation. In addition, with some of our special class programs, we've accepted tuition students from other districts. Our reputation has been very solid, and we've had a number of kids, and that is increasing every year. So we're also able to bring in revenue. It offsets some of our costs, and again, we see it as a win-win situation, and I think it's also helped tremendously with the budget. After that, you see an example of what I just talked about. We have an expanded 812 special class ABA program for children with autism. We started that a couple of years back just for the primary grades. As the children aged up and a few students came back to district, Dr. McDonnell oversaw implementing a second section of this. It has been very successful, and of course, we plan to continue that. That is in the budget. Also, access to career and technical education programs. This is for our older children at the high, I should say, students at the high school. BOSI's, we offer some job skills training to our students, but we can't do what BOSI's does. Up in, near Valhalla, there is a campus where you can learn everything from, you know, studio production to, you know, auto mechanics. There's a professional, we have a small little home ec room here, but there is a massive commercial kitchen there for people that want to get into culinary. So we have budgeted two spots. It's not a lot because these programs are expensive, but if our Committee on Special Education decides that students would benefit from this program, we have added that to the budget as well. Also, at the high school, we have a 15-1 special class program. These are students who need a smaller learning environment, no more than 15, that's just the ratio of the class size, and it would be for students pursuing a Regents diploma but need a bit of a slower pace and a smaller class environment. So that, we have some subjects and classes. Currently, we're expanding it by one. Also, to continue the teacher leadership model. Last year, we implemented for the first time in many years, teacher leaders to lead curriculum projects. So this year, the group of teachers that we appointed, it's a small stipend, they're taking a leadership role in promoting our Writing Initiative, which is a K-12 instructional program that is aligned across grade levels, and the teachers, we invested in them, we've sent them to training, and they give back by supporting their colleagues and being, you know, mentors and teacher leaders within their schools and grade levels. Next, we will continue to work on PD with all K-12 teachers in the area of ENL, which is English as a New Language, formerly known as ESL. We do have a number of students that come to us from other countries. English was not their first language. There is a state requirement to work with students, and this is professional development that is actually required by New York State. Dr. McDonnell, again, one of her hats, she has brought in some very high-quality programs and teacher training programs on conference days and after school. And then last on this slide is to support development in visual literacy. So we have a partnership with the Jacob Burns Center up in Pleasantville. We sent a group of English teachers over the summer to train there, and then we've had people from Jacob Burns come onsite, and we know that our students today are more visual than ever. And there is, you know, a way to integrate that and to make English and learning about a text or a story more exciting by integrating visual literacy into the program. This was mentioned earlier by Ms. Licio, but we are budgeting for a consultant who is working extensively in this area with many different school districts. Altaris Consulting, they've been working with us in providing professional development and giving us some advice, but we are entering into a formal relationship with them. They're going to conduct, or they're actually working on it already, a needs assessment and an evaluation of all our safety and security. It includes everything from transportation to how our security monitors work in the school, you know, entrance procedures, exit procedures. It's a very comprehensive eval, and we think that it is something important, and we will be working with them. And actually, a week from tonight, John Laplaca, who is their chief consultant, will be here to talk more about his work for our school district. Next, we're increasing operations and maintenance budget line for immediate safety and security upgrades as well as refurbishing classrooms. So many people, you know, have been out and participated in the dialogue about our bond, and you heard, you know, we definitely have security upgrades that are part of this bond proposal, but then many people have said, well, what are you doing right now? You know, we understand you have plans for this bond, but that's two years away. So we thought it was important in this budget to include some, at least some safety upgrades throughout the district where possible. So we're increasing that line, and then also, within the gen ed classrooms, even some teachers came forward and said, well, gee, you know, it's wonderful, you'll have these new classrooms and a new wing, and you're doing these renovations, but what about the older classrooms? Is there anything that you can do for them? We have done a number of upgrades. We have to do it in a cycle. We cannot upgrade every older classroom all at once. It would be too costly within an operating budget. So last year, I want to say, Ms. Liu, I think we tackled at least six or eight classrooms over the summer, but this year, we plan to do more of that. We're expanding it, we're increasing the line to refurbish rooms, tiles, ceiling tiles, painting, and new furniture. Our next line talks about adding one full-time security position at the middle high school. Also, the next bullet talks about adding after-school security at Cottle. So we've had several meetings with our task program as well as our PTA. We're doing some great, exciting programs after school. There is a very competent staff, and they do the best they can, but we do believe that maybe it is time to have a security person, maybe through a security company, providing after-school supervision and monitoring the traffic that comes and goes at Cottle. And we're thinking about potentially partnering with task and maybe even our PTA to make sure we can get as much after-school coverage as possible. Next, our goal is to maintain a transparent budget process. That is what we are doing this evening. This will continue over the next six weeks or so. Ms. Liu can talk about this further, but she does have a budget advisory committee, and they've had input into this process as well. And those are people from our community and board members who serve on that committee. Also, contract with a public relations service to ensure continuous access to relevant district information. So earlier today, the board started to consider a public relations service. We recognize that in the age of social media, maybe the district hasn't been on top of as much, you know, public concern or public discussion that is sometimes posted on social media. So we are thinking of engaging more in that arena, potentially setting up a Facebook page, and doing more to promote and to push out information of all the exciting and innovative things that are happening here in the district. So we, in this budget, we are including some money, it is not a lot, but some money for public relations to enhance that and have better communication for our parents. Also, we are including in this budget, or it is in the budget currently, but a line for a facilities director. Now, this is not an addition. We did have one of our veteran custodians retire this past year, and what we are, Ms. Liu is in the process right now of redesigning those job responsibilities, and we believe that when we looked at the salary and the overtime and the benefits, that we could bring someone in who has a very high level of skill, who could provide supervision, work alongside our custodial teams, but also supervise them, also teach them and train them. There's a lot of new technology, green technologies, that we think we could do a better job of staying more current with in maintaining our school buildings. Also, with this position, moving forward potentially with a major bond project, this could be a key position, someone who could act as a liaison between the gentleman you just met here, Mr. CalGy and his firm, and our school district. Also, we are looking always for cost efficiencies and ways to generate revenue. I spoke briefly on that earlier, and then we've had this goal, it may not be something that is sustainable way into the future, but right now, we've always had this commitment to staying within the allowable tax levy or tax cap. And within this budget, we still believe we can accomplish all these things and stay within the allowable tax levy. Now I'm going to move into enrollment numbers. This is always of great concern to our families, and ever since I've been in Tuckahoe, which is 15 years now, there has been a strong commitment to maintaining manageable class sizes and desirable class sizes, I would say. So if you look on the left, you will see current enrollment at the elementary school. This, I want to emphasize, our general education class sizes. So we have special programs, I talked about that earlier. They are not included because they are not in the gen ed classes. So you see right now, we have five kindergarten classes, we have four first grades. That enrollment went up pretty dramatically over the summer, and 25 is high for first grade. So we are bringing that, or breaking that into five sections next year. That is the recommendation to reduce that class size. Right now, we have hired some extra support to help manage those high numbers. In second grade, very, very good class size, you have five sections of 20. Third grade, five sections of 20, and then you can see in fourth and fifth, four sections, and again, very manageable numbers. So looking at next year, right now, we have 74 kindergarten children registered. This is always a difficult thing to do, which is project ahead. How many kindergarten students will we have in September? We track it weekly. Mr. Coglietto's been sending us the numbers, but we're projecting 92. We looked at past trends, we look at current registration, we believe it would not go above 92. However, we could get a surge next month or the month after. We may change this. The challenge would be we have no more space, and to create a fifth section of K, we would have to convert the library to a classroom. And right now, we don't want to lose the library at Cottle. The library needs an upgrade for sure, you know, it needs work, but, and we are planning to do that in the near future, but we are hoping that these numbers hold. So we will keep, continue to track that in a presentation two or three weeks from now. If we see the enrollment going up and we think it's going to surpass 92, that may be adjusted. But you can see the rest of Cottle has very manageable, and as I said earlier, desirable class sizes, 23, 20, 20, 20, and 21. A few just highlights in Cottle School. Again, it's a little repetitive, I apologize, but I think it's worth mentioning that we are adding after-school security in this budget. We are going to just slightly increase AIS. We have a new RTI program at Cottle that Mr. Coglietto took initiative on formalizing, and I think we're doing even a better job of identifying academic intervention service needs and servicing those students. So this is based on projections, a small increase there. There are new science standards being rolled out at the state level, and we do believe that it is time to do new science curriculum materials at our elementary school. That is in this budget. Dr. McDonnell would oversee that implementation. Also, continued PD for teachers of English language learners. The bulk of our English language learners are at Cottle Elementary School. And then also maintain that special class program. I mentioned all of that in the opening slides. The Writing Revolution, I spoke about that as well. Again, sorry to be repetitive, but that's specific to Cottle, I'm sorry, that's district-wide. The STAR Assessment at Cottle is our progress monitoring assessment for RTI. We have that, and it's administered three times a year. Also, we have a good, a really good range of extracurricular programs. The chess program is doing really well, foreign language at Cottle, the theater program, diversity club, we expanded last year, and we're going to maintain that. Strings, art, and education, online math. The new one is adding a student government advisor. So I think this is long overdue. It's not a big budget driver, but we have a very active student government in the middle school and the high school. I questioned, well, why not Cottle? So we are implementing that, and you know, our new principal next year, I think, will appreciate implementing a student government for the first time. Middle school class sizes, I won't spend too much time on this. Our largest class is in sixth grade, moving to seventh. There's 100 students in gen ed, but you still end up with 25 per class, you know, there are four sections per grade level. Four sections are ideal. Our teachers, it enables our teachers to kind of work as a team and have collaborative planning time. So as you can see, that, those are the numbers break down for middle school. Just some highlights, four sections, always a very efficient way to run the middle school. The STEM course is something new, not necessarily a budget driver, but we're shifting around our 10-week courses. Our teachers and under Dr. McDonnell and Mr. Barnett's guidance are developing a STEM course, which would be a 10-week course for each middle school student in grades six, seven, and eight. Some of the topics that will be taught, engineering, robotics, coding, digital ethics, renewable energy, and situational problem solving. We think this will be a very exciting course. Also, geography and world events will be offered in grades six and eight, and then we will maintain our 15-1 special program that has been introduced at the middle school level. Also, in this budget is late bus transportation. We've had it consistently for the past few years because we were able to afford that for students who, you know, who take advantage of after-school extra help and after-school activities, we will have a late bus. High school, we don't break it down by classes because of course, there are so many different variations of courses that are offered, but by the grade levels, you see the high school has a slight increase in student enrollment from 285 last year to 292. Our seniors will be the smallest class in quite some time, but you see the other classes are, you know, fairly consistent with some of the younger grades, 85, 62, and 89 on the entire grade level. These are the 10 AP courses that we offer, I'm sorry, the 11, excuse me, with computer science principles being the newest. In this budget, we are maintaining lab periods for geometry, which we believe is one of the most challenging math courses. The labs are sometimes a bit challenging to schedule for everyone. However, the high school team is working on that master schedule. They will do their best to have everyone benefit from an extra lab period for a very challenging math course. Online courses are also included in the budget. We've done well with them if there's a student with a particular interest. If we can't offer everything, we are a small school, but we've had some really good success, and the quality of online courses has increased tremendously over the past several years. Also, I mentioned earlier, the strings program will continue into the high school with Mr. Duchateau, and then maintain the co-curricular activities. The Senior Internship Program has been very well-received. Habitat for Humanity is thriving. I want to say about 50% of our students at some point in the year participate in this club and go on builds, and then our Vocal Pats is a performing arts club. So staffing. This budget basically maintains all staff that was added this year. You see 2.5 teachers, so basically, that wasn't budgeted for, but I talked about the situation with the ABA program. We did not know until after the budget was adopted last year that that program, we had enough students to run that program and that students were willing to come back from their out-of-district placements. So we added, Dr. McDonnell recommended adding a special education teacher. I think there was some speech added to support that program as well, and then we did increase our gen ed programs. So the board understands, you know, what we've been doing in a tax cap environment for quite some time is, we don't ask for extra. So at this point, we're making our projections. We have the current number, you know, here we are in March. We're trying to figure out how many students we will have for next year. It's not an exact science, but as administration, we don't come to the board and ask for extra and then maybe have staff with a period off, or to, we can't operate like that, so we budget very tightly. And then if there is a legitimate need, and it has to be a legitimate need, or a need that makes sense, we do come back to the board. Down below, there was some support... Down below, there was some support staff added. So the teaching assistant, I believe, was for the ABA program, that is required. The aides, I think, at least several of them were for the ABA program, some were for tuition students. Dr. McDonald brought in a number of tuition students from various districts. We've expanded, we had the bulk coming from Yonkers, but now we have Pleasantville, we have Scarsdale, Rye, we have a number of districts that send children to us, which is very positive. And in cases where they need aides, we will hire the aide, but of course, the expense is being paid for by the home district. And then you see, at the high school, two aides were added there as well. Now, new staffing proposed for this year, we're going with additional increase. I said earlier, one administrative position, which we think will be very valuable to students first and foremost, to parents that have children with disability. And also, when you look at the numbers, with the increase in revenue and someone who can go out and continue to attract tuition students, and someone who also will provide a lot of support and supervision as Dr. McDonald spends even more of her time in the area of technology for the district. Next, the facilities director, not a budget driver, it's in this year's budget, it's replacing someone who retired, but I think a very valuable position, especially with what we have coming up. At the high school, we need .8 of a teacher. That's not just one teacher, it's several different subject areas. I believe it's one period of bio, one period of global, Dr. McDonald helped me, and one period of...
Strings also.
Strings, the increase in strings, and one period of English. Okay, so .8 means four periods, basically, of a middle or high school teacher. Okay? And then at the middle school, there's an increase of .2, and we will be able to accomplish all of those extra classes that have been designed by administrators and teachers. Now, besides the full-time teaching staff, and we are also looking to add that advisor at the elementary school for a geo organization, maintain those four curriculum positions, I said that earlier. And on the area of athletics, we are, because of participation growth, we are adding one, just one team, which would be JV, boys golf. But then adding coaches to support our athletes and make sure safety is provided. You do see assistant coaches for cheerleading, which is a thriving program. Boys basketball, adding a modified coach because the numbers have been very, very big. Girls soccer as well, we have an increase in participation. And then the weight coach, which is something we started this year. We have a very nice, you know, fitness center here at the middle high school. And I think just teaching students fitness for life, someone who maybe isn't in a competitive sport, but does want to learn how to, you know, exercise safely. And we added that position, and that is something that we'd like to see continue. It's been very, very well received by the students. Lastly, before I turn it over to Ms. Liu, I just wanted to show you a visual of what new classroom furniture looks like. You can get a sense, this is in our high school history classroom, Ms. Heinsohn. This furniture was purchased this past year as a pilot. And you see the shapes of the tables. The idea behind this furniture is it can be reconfigured very easily, and it really fosters collaboration in classrooms, which is what we are after. So in this budget, the increase in operations and maintenance would allow us to, at Cottle, refurbish and refurnish four or five classrooms. And what Lee and I spoke about was getting on a cycle where we hit a grade level each year, K, 1, 2, 3. Now, we may not start with K, we'll start with the classrooms that are in the most need. But that is something that now will be part of our operating budget. And then also, we allotted for two classrooms at the middle school, two classrooms at the high school. And the end result may look something like that, although we would give the teachers some choice in what furniture works best for their program. Now, Ms. Liu? We'll go over the numbers.
Good evening. I don't think that's the correct slide. Go back one?
Yeah.
Oh, so that's where we're starting, okay. So what are the main budget drivers? To find out what that would be, we start the budget process in October. We work, as Mr. Albano said, closely with administration to produce a preliminary budget, which we're presenting tonight. This is the first time we're publicly reviewing this proposed budget. And there'll be three additional presentations before the board adopts a budget, and then the community can vote on the budget on May 16. The first step in the budget process is to project the district's revenues and expenditures. The main expenditure drivers are the staffing increases. So the addition this year of unbudgeted teachers, as well as the projection for new teachers next year and administrators, that adds almost $700,000 to the budget for next year. We also have increased pension contributions because the TRS, the Teachers Retirement System Pension, is increasing their rate. We pay a percentage of our teachers' salaries and administrator's salaries for the teachers' retirement system, and their rate is going up to keep the health of the pension system intact. The ERS, the Employee Retirement System, is staying just about flat, but the bulk of our salaries are in the teacher side. We also are seeing an increase in health insurance, and that, the rate is going up as well as we have additional employees who take health insurance. So we're seeing an increase in health insurance of about, we're projecting $238,000. And in operations and maintenance, we're looking at a $155,000 increase to cover many of the areas that Mr. Albano was talking about. Increased furniture, security consultants, security upgrades, as well as increasing some maintenance lines for the year that we have between now and when we will hopefully have an expenditure from a capital project on repairs and improvements to infrastructure. On the athletic side, these several years of increasing programs have caused next year's budget to increase by about $90,000. But that has been slightly offset on the expenditure side by a reduction in what we are projecting our costs will be for out-of-district tuitions, for the students that we send to both these programs, as well as to other private schools to educate the children with special needs. We're anticipating a $270,000 decrease that we can project for next year. We still have to budget very conservatively on both the expenditures and tuitions, as well as the revenues and tuitions, because any small change, several students moving in or out of the district can really instantly impact those lines, and we have to be conservative of how we take a look at those. But given the trends that we've seen, as well as the number of students that we know that are in the district currently, we think that that is a reasonable decrease for that expenditure line. On the revenue side, we are taking a look at what the state allows us to maximally increase, and I'll go through the calculation, our tax levy. It's not, it's a misnomer to call it a 2% tax levy increase because there are various factors that the state allows us to factor in and out, and we go through that calculation based on the requirements of the formula they give us. And next year, our maximum allowable increase is 3.12%, which would provide 800 and close to $850,000 to the budget. On the revenue side as well, we've taken a look at the tuition revenues that we brought to the district, as well as taking into account students that are graduating and leaving the district. And I believe that even with a conservative outlook for next year in terms of how much revenue we can anticipate, I think we can increase that line by about $122,000. And then the governor's proposal on state aid came out in January, and they're still negotiating in Albany what the final state aid numbers will look like around the state. But as of now, from the governor's proposal, we're looking at $77,000 additionally in state aid. Last year, we saw a reduction in state aid, but next year, we do have a slight increase, which will help us. So if you look at, these are, the third line or the third column, the third main column is our 2018-19 proposed budget. The first line would be the number of, the amount of money that we get from our tax levy, including STAR. And as you can see, that's 27, almost $28 million. It's about 83% of our budget, and that's what our maximum allowable increase is from the state. We also receive sales tax and pilots, which are payments in lieu of taxes. We're proposing that's going to increase slightly, virtually by about $10,000 next year. We also, the next line would be charges for services. Those are revenues that we get, tuitions from both regular education students as well as special education students, also charges for facilities rentals and things of that nature. We're predicting there about $122,000 over last year's budget, increasing those revenues. Other revenues, those are relatively flat, just a $4,000 increase. The state aid, about $67,000 there, as well as, I'll have to check that number, but they're virtually staying about $67,000, $77,000. And then our total appropriated fund balance would be, and we'll go through this backwards again, how we would be able to pay for the expenditures that we're anticipating. Our total budget that we're anticipating for next year is $33,833,551, which is a 4.1% increase budget to budget from this year. We are missing some slides, I think. Well, we'll see if they come up at the end. So we'll go backwards. So the initial revenue budget, as you can see, that's how it breaks out in a pie chart. The property taxes are about 83% of our budget. Our state aid is about 8% of our budget. And then all the other pieces are just smaller pieces of our budget. And the difference between what we raise in revenues and what we anticipate our expenses to be, we take out of our fund balance, and that would be about 4%. On the expenditure side, we are looking at, again, the $33,833,551. We have to come in with a balanced budget according to state education law. So our general support, which you'll see is going up about 5%, and we'll get back to the detail on that as we go find those other slides. Total instruction is going up to about 4.1%, and that's the bulk of our budget, to $19 million. Pupil transportation is going down slightly based on our projections for next year, that's relatively flat. Total employee benefits are significantly rising, that's going up 6.9%, and those are social security, our pensions, our health insurance. And then the debt service, as we talked about even during the capital project, we're starting to see some debt mature, and we see that next year, our debt service is going down slightly, $77,000. And an inter-fund transfer, it looks like an increase, but that's just a reclass, those are the monies that we move from funds for our summer programs and things like that, that we get monies back from the federal government. And as you can see, our total instruction, including total benefits, is about, that's mostly salaries, some supplies, but mostly salaries. So that totals about 78%. And that's typically in line with what you'd see in any school district in this area. That's the three-quarters of a budget is typically on your basic instructional program, the rest being general support, a small amount, 6% for debt service and 5% for transportation. History of the tax levy and the budget, as you can see, although we are looking at some significant larger numbers this year, if you look at the past five years, we have been under, below a 2% increase overall in general. And five-year average of the tax levy increase would be about 1.5%, and then a five-year average of our budget to budget increase about 1.85%. I'm looking for those slides, no. So unfortunately, we're missing a couple of slides, but I can go back and just... No, I went through, I think, let's see. No, I think, I'll just, oh.
There they were.
Yes. So somehow, we missed those, okay. Let's go back. Sometimes they come in, sometimes they don't. Okay. No?
They do.
Right, there's maybe some hidden slides that, what I can do is, are there some hidden slides that we're...
No, they can't be hidden. We, one of the ones that have these, right?
Yeah, but I didn't go before that either. I might lead up to that.
Yeah, you don't want to end with that.
No. I just want to go in a rational project.
Okay. So how many more up here? We did that, you want to start here?
No, there's one, there's one or two even before that one.
All right, you like that one? You talked about that one.
Right. There's something, all right.
You like this one, that one?
There we go.
That's the one you wanted.
Where'd that one come from? All right. We're having some technical difficulties here, but we'll go back to where we thought we would start. So how do we determine what our maximum allowable tax levy is? And this is the formula that's provided to us by the state of New York. The way it works is we take a look at last year's tax levy, and that's where we start. The first thing that's not well-known, but is provided to us by the state, is we get a tax-based growth factor. And we multiply last year's tax levy by our growth factor, which is basically improvements that are done to buildings and things throughout the district, as well as new construction in the district. The State Controller's Office, the Office of Taxation and Finance, provides us with a growth factor, they provide every district with one. And this year, it was 1.01 or 1.33%. We multiply last year's levy by that to get our subtotal. And then we add in and out our pilots, and we take out our capital expenditures because we can't use our capital expenditures to increase our tax base. So we take all that out, and then we provide the inflation factor, which this year is 2%, it's a full 2%. And we multiply our adjusted prior-year levy to that 2% and get a new subtotal. Then we add back in the things that we will be charging next year, our capital for principal and interest, payments for our bond debt, as well as we subtract out our subsequent year pilots to see what our tax, our allowable tax levy would be. And that's where we came up with the 27, 9, 49, 124, or the 3.12%. See if we can get that next slide. Oh, you can do it from there.
Yeah, I can. I'm going to try to find it for you.
Yeah, there was also the one with the budget gap, but I can just say that out loud, and then we can go to the fund balance. So...
Go ahead.
Round it.
Talk amongst yourselves now.
So when, if we take a 3.12 tax levy increase, we start with a baseline expenditure budget of $33,833,551. That's what all our expenditures that we project for next year add up to. We subtract out all the revenues that we are looking at in the district, which includes our tax levy, our interest, our tuitions, and any state aid that we get. And that we project to be $32,584 and 4. And that leaves us a budget gap, basically, of $1,249,547. So what I am projecting that we can do for next year is to take that $1,249,547 and appropriate fund balance to use that to balance the budget. As you can see, those are our appropriated fund balances over the year. This year, we appropriated $9,69,820. We anticipate that the end of the year, we'll have a surplus. I say 385, you can see in yellow, that is an estimate. We, since subsequent to just even producing this slide, we had two tax certioris that came in for about $200,000. So that may be reduced, depending on the timing of when we pay them, our surplus at the end of the year may only be about $200,000, which would be something that we could discuss as we get closer to the end of the year. But right now, I'm anticipating that we'll take the $1,249,547 and appropriate that from our fund balance to cover our budget for next year. What we still don't know about for next year are our tax certiori petitions and judgments that come in all the time. Tax certioris are requests typically by large businesses, as well as large multifamily buildings or any other businesses in the district, that they are stating that based on their business conditions, they are over-assessed. They go through a long process of judicial review, legal review, and at some point, we have to often reimburse them for prior-year taxes. So what we have been doing in the district is... So, what we have been doing in the district is reimbursing them through our tax certiori reserve that we have built up to a healthy level in the district, and therefore, we don't have to go out to the bond market to bond, to repay those tax certioris. We also, for next year, are not fully aware of what our final state aid will be. Sometimes the legislature will provide more state aid to school districts after reviewing the governor's proposal, and we'll wait and see on that. Also, we have to see what the exact staffing levels will be required to meet any new mandates or enrollment changes, as well as any other unknowns that may come up. Just to give you a little more information on the tax certiori, we currently have in our reserve $3.9 million as of last June, but we have an estimated potential liability of $16,219,516 of June 30th. We have, in our budget, a $30,000 appropriation each year, and that's all we've appropriated, assuming that we would be able to use our tax cert reserve to cover potential liabilities. The amount that we have to refund from year to year varies. Last year, we had significant higher refunds, and we paid out about $750,000. This year, it looks like we'll probably be more in the $250,000 to $300,000 range. But that can change depending on whenever some of those large ones out there come to a final judgment in court, and then we are just made aware that we have to refund them within a certain period of time. Okay, we went through these. So, that's the basic information. The only other thing I wanted to tell you was that there will be three more budget presentations. We'll find what happened to those hidden slides and get them in order. We will also make sure that we have a public meeting on May 9th, I believe, April 9th. Be helpful to have the slides, let me pull it out. So, the next budget review will be March 19th, followed by April 19th, and on April 17th, we'll have, the board will adopt a final budget. There'll be a final public hearing on the vote, on the budget, on May 7th, and then on May 15th, the budget vote. And, any questions? Want to go back to the front?
Okay, sure.
Let me start by saying, Lee and I checked those slides very carefully. That was a technical, that is a technical glitch, because they are there, and Lee did, I think, a really great job of detailing all the finances. So, please, if there are any questions for me or Lee.
Just to start, Lee, if you could explain how we come up with the, it's 3.12%, correct? So, what, the base growth factor, what is that, what does that mean, the base growth factor?
Okay. That is a number that's provided to us by the state. They take a look at all the new construction in the district, as well as improvements to homes, where they provide that information to the state. They collect that from each individual community. And they just, I, they don't provide us with how they come up with that factor, but they do come up with a number that they feel represents the growth in the district. They allow you to increase your tax levy based on the growth in the district. They don't give you any kind of factor for enrollment growth or declines. That's the only other than inflation factor that they do give you to increase your tax levy.
But I would think that it sort of means the same thing, that if there's new construction, then there's the assumption that there's going to be an increase in enrollment. And I just think it's important to say, because if that number is 3%, it's that number for a reason. There are reasons, you will need additional money, right, to take care of the increase in enrollment and the increased stress on the district.
Absolutely.
So, I think it just makes sense, and I just think it's worth saying, because if we chose not to go to the allowable, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't really be doing a justice to the needs that have been created because of the new construction and the growth.
True.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the way I'm kind of rationalizing it in my mind, that we need it. There's a reason why the formula works that way, because they see that you need the money.
And it's typically a lag as well, that we may have seen the enrollment growth for several years, but before the numbers really are available to the state, we won't see it a couple of, a couple of years after.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, do any of the board members have any questions for Lee or Carl?
Yeah, I do. For the, I mean, I'm happy to see that the furniture was put on there, because in the years past, it was not. I guess my concern is, is that really enough? Because four to five classrooms in Cottle and two in middle school and two in high school, we're really looking at at least six, if we go at that same rate, it's going to be over six years before everything is done. So, I guess the question is, is there other places in the budget that it could have been taken for? I mean, I said there's a lot of, it's a big increase in sports, which is 92,000, which is an increase. So, I don't know, I just feel like it's going to take a long time to get to that place.
I would actually add to that also, because when Peter and I did the tour, the walkthrough last week, really, you do see the needs in the classrooms. And, you know, when the kids are there, and there's a lot of activity, you don't see it so much, but when the rooms are empty, and you're really looking, I do really think that there is a need, and to tackle four classrooms at a time, I mean, could we do more? And, you know, could we be a little bit more aggressive with that? And how could we do that? And I would, I would like to see, I think, a plan to try to do more. You know, I think it's, it's a little bit difficult, only because the way it's presented, we don't see the dollar amounts allocated for each of the items that are discussed. So, then it's hard to have the conversation, like Cynthia just brought up, well, in athletics, okay, well, it's sort of, you know, should we pick this, or should we pick that? And maybe that would help the community add to that discussion, because we would know what's important to our community. You know, if they would like to see more of an investment in the existing classrooms, well, you know, that's a very good point, and maybe then it should be a little bit more reflected in the budget that way. If there's, you know, a desire to have, there's an increase in athletics budget, and that's a good thing, but how much is it costing for each of those additional items? We can't see that from the slides. So, that would be my suggestion, I think, for next time, to actually be able to see what those are, because I think it would help with the conversation. You know, we need to know what does the community value? What are they looking for right now? You know?
And I guess all their options to take, if they do value that, and the, and there is a value in adding the sports as well, is there an option to take any money from the fund balance? If people really feel like we should really invest some money, like, right now, because of the conditions of the classrooms.
And does that go with Michelle says about walkthrough? The thing that stuck out to me, in addition to the furniture, with the flooring, flooring would look like a little bit, there was a lot of missing tile.
And is the flooring, that's part of that furniture money? That's what...
No, there's an allocation for furniture, and then there's also an allocation for repairs and improvements to classrooms, such as painting and floors and things like that.
At that discussion, I know earlier, several months back, we were talking about first floor, and the discussion of air conditioning just came up, where we talked about eventually abandoning that from the bond, which was the last bonds, and there were way beyond that. But we talked about over time, getting more air conditioner units, window units into the classrooms. How does that fit into this budget, Lee? Is that, is that built into the classroom?
We have an allocation for some, not to do the entire building, but we also wanted to wait and see in terms of what we would be able to do with the construction project itself. Because if they're going to be putting curtains and things over the exterior of the building, we didn't know if it would make sense to do it at this time. But we certainly can look into, from the other side of the building. We have some monies in place to do that.
So, you anticipate doing some, some more of those classrooms?
Yeah, and I, I do also think it's, you know, wonderful, and I'd like to applaud you for finding ways to get things done within the constraints of the existing budget. So, like the facilities, Director of Facilities, and things that we're able to keep in the budget that we've brought on over the years, like the after-school bus, and the geometry lab, and all these kinds of enhancements that we've been doing, that we are able to maintain, and at the same time, add things, and really for the places where we're not adding additional cost, but working within our budget, looking at things like in the middle school, adding a STEM class, looking at something that, maybe an elective, that's not working so well, and adding in something else. You know, I like that creative thinking, and I think it goes a long way. So, I applaud you for that.
I really liked the, really stuck out to me, along the same lines, what Michelle's saying, is the additional STEM class in the middle school, and the additional courses that are going to go along with that. That really stuck out to me as being a really great addition. I'm happy to see that, really happy to see that.
I think it's worth mentioning, too, that, and I should have said this in my introduction, that we have our PPLT committee set up, and they had input. So, for example, the class sizes and the sections at Cottle. That was, was, you know, an engaging discussion with parent input, with teacher input, with support staff. Also, I know at the middle high school, particularly at the high school, I know the PPLT did look at this budget. So, you know, what you see here this evening, and of course, this is the first discussion, and we do want to hear from the community, but certainly, there has been input already through, through the model that is in place.
I guess with some of those additions, like you were talking about, the geometry, and with continuing with the writing revolution, it might be helpful for people to see what has been the effect of adding that, like, how has the writing improved? And with the geometry lab, well, when we do get scores from the regions, has that introduction of the lab helped maybe raise the scores? And then comparing that to, because there are some kids that didn't get the lab versus those who did, is there a difference? Do the ones who get the labs' scores are better than the ones who didn't? Like, things like that, I think, would be helpful, because then people feel like, well, then there's a reason to add them. The other thing was with the, I guess, with the curriculum and instruction, textbooks and things like that, it might be helpful, because I know in the past, I mean, I was on the other side, always like, I guess, putting input about this, feeling like there wasn't enough, like, new material bought. I mean, for certain of the language classes, I know that it's always constantly copies, things like that. So, what is, I guess, the idea of what will be purchased, like, some of these new things? Like, maybe the community would want to hear that, that there are certain, I know at Cottle, a lot has been done.
Dr. McDonald, in her role as, as in charge of curriculum, may want to just briefly speak to it. I don't want to get off topic.
Yeah, I know it's not exact, yeah.
But she can speak to a process now for the adoption of textbooks, that there's a more formal process.
Yeah, this year, with the Professional Development Curriculum Assessment and Instruction Committee, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of hats that committee holds, but we have developed a, we can call it a textbook adoption policy, but you might not end up with a textbook, right? It might be a fully online piece of material, right? So, it doesn't necessarily have to be a hard book, but it goes through a myriad of things that, anything that a group of teachers wants to adopt, they have to go through, from whatever, what kind of differentiation does it have? What kind of language support does it have? Does it have an ability to have a lower reading level and a higher reading level? You know, what are all the resources? And we, we pulled from probably about 10 different districts, well, how are they doing this work? So that anything that is going to be adopted has to go through this thoughtful thought process, instead of just saying, well, we found one we like it, let's give it a try, so that we can feel more confident that the work has been done before adoption, that we, we believe it will meet the needs of our kids.
And how is it determined? Is it just solely on the teachers saying that they need these materials? Or is it, like, say, you're overseeing, saying, oh, there is a need for, say, I'm speaking specifically of the language programs, I've heard that various times, that there is no textbook and things like that?
Yeah. It needs to align to, if there's a curriculum change, that's an obvious one, right? Because if, if the content is changing, the standards are changing in the state, if our materials that we currently have don't align, that, that's a need, right? That, that has to happen there. And then you have to look at anything that has, has either outdated or missing materials, right? So, we also have, this year, developed a rotating schedule of curriculum review. It's a five-year cycle now, that we've also formalized, so that each year, there are two or three content areas that are starting the process of first, and first year is analysis of what we already have, right? Second year is, and then what's the plan for the change? And then that year is when you do that textbook analysis piece, or materials analysis piece. So, yeah, so I believe that world languages start next year on that formal process.
Another, this wasn't for you, Ellen, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm, it's okay.
But another thought that I just had about the extracurriculars and the athletics is, in the past, over the last couple of years, we have in our budget allocated money for certain things, and then the interest wasn't there. So, and the reverse has happened. During the school year, you've come to us and asked us to add something, because an interest has come up, something new, a new idea, or the interest is there. And I'm just thinking, would it be better sometimes to take the money, because this year it's so important, and put additional money into security, and put additional money into the infrastructure, like furniture and, and the refurbishing of the classrooms? And then if during the year, next year, there is this interest, we could always add it. You know, I mean, we're, we're still looking at a surplus this year of, depending on if those tax certs come through, $385,000. So, it's just another way of thinking about it. And I just know that last year, specifically, there were a couple of sports teams that we had allocated money for, and then they didn't, the interest wasn't there. So, why tie up that money when we know that there are specific needs that we could be using it for, and kids, and students could be benefiting from it right off the bat?
If we find out a team is not running, we can always do a budget transfer from athletics to furniture lines, per se. So, that's always something we could do during the year. But, again, we could also look at it from the beginning.
Or we could do it the other way.
Right, right.
That's, yeah, that sounds, okay. You know, it's, I mean, and I, I appreciate the conversation, you know? This is our first look at it. This is the first look that the board has had at it. So, you know, and I, and I would really like to hear from the community about it, because, you know, it's, you know, all of our taxpayer money, and I think everyone really, you know, a healthy conversation, I think, you know, would do us all good. Okay, anything else?
Yes, just a quick one, like Michelle said, first time, kind of looking at it. I mean, the, the kind of what jumped out at me was the gap. It seemed pretty significant, a million three. So, and you, you kind of went through it a little quickly, I tried to follow. I was wondering if you could maybe quickly go through that one more time.
Can you hold it with that, Ellen?
And then I, I thought, if I heard you correctly, you mentioned that there's a possibility of a couple hundred thousand in tax certs that would come through, and then you would, that was going to be taken out of this fund balance?
I'll go back to both of those.
And I was wondering why here and not out of the reserve?
Well, it, it does come out of the reserve. That, what we do is we take a look and see what our projected expenditures are for the end of the year, and then what our revenues are for the year. So, it looks like at the end of the year, we will have a surplus of revenues over expenditures of 385, although actually, as of today, I'm saying that it'll probably be about 200,000 lower. You'll see that in the next board meeting, I think, some of the settlements that just came in. So, we're expecting, actually, our surplus this year would be 200,000. The tax certs are all taken, it all, all our, all our funds are taken out of tax certs, if they're tax certs, or wherever they come from. If we can pay for them out of any other surpluses during the year, we would. Otherwise, we go to our tax cert reserve. If we have any surplus at the end of the year, we replenish our tax cert reserves, or any other reserves that you might want to put them into.
Right, so if I, if I understand that correctly, if we have the reserve of 3.9 million, it seems like last year was a high number of, I think you said 750,000, and typically, it's 200 to 300,000, which is what it looks like it'll be this year. Why not possibly take the 200,000 that we were going to use from this number to pay the tax certs that just came in, use that for security or safety, or for furniture upgrades, and use the reserve, which is what it's there for?
We could do that. We would do that in this year, though, is, because it's a surplus for this year. So, we can look to see what our surplus is at the end of the year, and if the board approves, you know, if you would like to do it that way, we certainly could look into doing some work this year as well. And then we have the monies for next year that we've allocated in the budget lines to do the, the things that we're talking about for next year.
So, if I, if I could add to that, you know, we could, what we have in the budget, we could kind of set that as a minimal, you know, four to five classes at Cottle, which is one grade level, two middle, two high school. And please know that, you know, we have purchased furniture, we have refurbished a number of classrooms. It's not the first time we're doing it. Every year, we do some, but this is an increase. And then we can, as Rob recommends, because Lee and I had this discussion, we can look at where we stand at the end of the year. If there is a surplus, we certainly can do more. Maybe we can do two grade levels at Cottle. Maybe we could do four at the middle and four at the high school. And that would be something that we could come back to the board with, of course. Or you have the option of, you know, having that money go into fund balance, spending it or maintaining it. But, you know, I, I think it's important to recognize that we have an unprecedented amount of fund balance, at least in the 15 years that I've been here, and, and I, I think we've been very careful to, to try to build that up and, and be proactive with tax certs. But maybe it is time to use some of that money for upgrades, and I, I think that would be a, a great discussion for the board.
I, the reason why I think it's a good use for upgrades is because it's a, a one-time expense, where, you know, otherwise, if it's being used for salary or operating expenses, then next year, we have to come up with that same number again, because that gap will be there. And then, you know, then you could see how that fund... And then, you know, then you could see how that fund balance can quickly start to get depleted. So, you know, I'm just thinking, I know, over the years, we have really increased a lot in extracurricular and in sports in the last two years specifically. And, you know, I think we need to take a harder look at some of, more of the improvements and those types of needs, and sort of balance that out. And then, if during the year, the interest, I mean, I don't, never once has this board been asked, you know, if, to add something or add a stipend for a curriculum, we have said no, if the interest is there. That's, that's just my thought right now.
Somebody can take a look at giving you some more detail for the next meeting.
And the other suggestion I'd like to make, if, if you could, for the next meeting, if those charts could just be bigger, because you just really can't see them for the audience to be watching, they just can't really see them.
Well, no, we talked about operating. Is that, is that in the next year's budget? Or is that something we're funding out of this year's budget?
I think the-
We're still hoping to do that in this year's budget.
This year's budget, right?
Does anyone from the audience have anything that they'd like to add?
Thank you, Lee, for that presentation. Just a couple of things. I know that the high school, for their PPLT committee, when we were discussing budgets, they had asked for a social worker. And I'm just wondering why the social worker was decided, why you guys decided against having a social worker. They kind of felt that a social worker for the high school and middle school was like their main request. That was their biggest request, their most important request, and it didn't make it into the budget. So, I'm just wondering why, because the feeling was that it would really help the students have someone else to talk to. It would help with some of the student management of behaviors. And so, you know, I'm just kind of wondering why that didn't make it.
Sure, sure. That, that was a pretty thoughtful discussion. And what our thinking was, with a director of special education, the director could chair, and we're, we're actually in the final stages of an interview process now, that director could chair meetings much more frequently than Dr. McDonald, or even than I did when, when I was in Dr. McDonald's position. We have hundreds of CSEs every year, and right now, the vast majority are chaired by our psychologist. So, the idea is adding the administrative position would free up many, many hours for a psychologist, psychologist to do the work that you are describing. Now, you may say, well, that's not a social worker, Carl. Well, in my opinion, it's nothing against social workers, because they're very valuable. But a psychologist can do just about everything a social worker can do, and more. So, you know, if, if anything, I would add a psychologist, although, and this was our, you know, dialogue back and forth amongst the admin team. But the idea is that our psychologist right now, under the new model, would have much more time. And when you shift over to the, the secondary guidance counselors, they have probably the most desirable caseloads in all of Westchester. The counselor-to-student ratio is fantastic. So, you have really strong counseling support. And then, again, freeing up time, time with the psychologists, we believe, will accomplish a lot of the things that, that the PPLT and the, the secondary administration presented. So, that was a decision. It's not that we wouldn't like even more support staff, you know, but, but there are limits, and, and we thought that was the best approach for this year.
Okay, I did bring up the guidance counselors being able to assist the kids also in that meeting. And the feeling was that a social worker would be more interested in just the general help of the kids, not so much college or course-related, and that a social worker would also be a different sort of outlet for the kids, someone that they felt they could speak to without having to worry about. It, it kind of, I don't know, like, not affecting their academics, but it's just some, you know, some, a different way for the kids to be able to have someone to go to. I know also, as a parent, in the past, when we used to have a social worker, I actually liked working with her. When I had a difficulty with some of the guidance counselors, I liked to go through the social worker, it made it a little bit easier. So, you know, if Mr. Solivan is going to have that sort of flexibility in his schedule and willing to do that sort of work, then I understand that. But that's not really what a school psychologist does. A social worker is just a little bit more laid, laid back, open and-
Well, well, Mrs. Solivan is certainly willing. And in fact, I, I think he would welcome, you know, the, the, the chairing of CSEs is a very tedious process, administrative, hours and hours behind a computer screen. I can tell you Eric is at his best when he's working directly with students and families. So, again, we, we, there, there are limits, and, and I don't disagree with you, Allison. You know, I think a social worker does add value. But we thought this was a way to increase the support, the direct support for students and families. And, and I, you know, I will point to a lot of Westchester districts have shifted away from social work and more towards psychologists, again, because they can do all of that and more. They can do the psychoed evals, they, they can do, but they also can provide, they can certainly do a home visit. Mr. Solivan does home visits if that's needed. They certainly can, can counsel students in crisis. They certainly can connect families to county-wide resources. And I, I work side by side with Eric, and there's, there's nobody better. So, again, you know, this idea is, I believe, and, and I, you know, I, I don't have an exact calculation for you this evening, but, you know, I believe that the chairing, just freeing up those, particularly in the springtime, when annual, annual reviews hit, he is consumed by chairing, and a, as all three psychologists are. And this will free up a tremendous amount of time, because the expectation, it's, Dr. McDonald and I worked on a new job description. The expectation for the new director of special ed is to chair, not every meeting. Sometimes psychologists will need to chair, but they will pick up a, a large portion of that, of that responsibility.
Okay, so students will be able to just drop in and speak to him if they need to?
They'll have much more avail, availability, is, is what we're projecting.
Okay, okay. And I like him very much, nothing against him at all, he's a great guy.
No, we understand.
And there's no issues, like, contractually doing, like, say, all of those things that you would like him to do? Contractually, that wouldn't be an issue with?
Not at all.
Okay. Also, in the PPLT meetings for the high school, the Bosse's was a big issue. I do see that you put two spots back in, and I know that they are very, very expensive. And I appreciate you putting the two spots in. I am, though, a little bit concerned that we're setting them aside for kids with special needs. You did mention that, and I feel like that program is a great program for anyone who's not necessarily college-bound. And I'm wondering if, it, setting up two programs, it, it seems so specific. It seems almost like you already have the two children in mind. So, okay, so if then, those two spots are not taken, can any student decide to take them?
The answer is absolutely yes. What, what, what I did say, and, and look, I, I wish we could fund six positions. But they are expensive, and, and it's not required for a gen ed student. And, and there is some debate on this back and forth. In today's day and age, you know, a high school diploma is, is, is really a basic requirement, even if you're entering the trades. So, literacy skills, mathematics skills, you know, everything you get with a basic regions diploma is important to be successful, even if you plan to enter the trades. And then there are plenty schools, you know, trade schools post-high school. However, it's expensive for us. And, and what, what I did say in response to it, as, as we went back and forth in our process, is that I want an evaluation. I don't want it to be just, oh, someone likes or is interested in TV production. Let's spend thirty thousand dollars and see if they, if they, there are occupational evals that will need to happen. There needs to be a thoughtful discussion with counselors, with teachers, with administrators. And then, and only then, would we approve that kind of expenditure. So, you know, we thought putting two in the budget was reasonable. It's a two, as you probably know, it's a two-year commitment to these programs. Usually, students would attend junior and senior year. But I, I, I need to say, you know, on record, that a student with an IEP, and if this is recommended by the Committee on Special Education, they, they would get preference over a general, gen ed student. If we didn't fill them, and we really don't have, yeah, I think there's some ideas of who, but that process hasn't happened yet. There have been no OCA evals, to my knowledge, at, at this time. So, this is a starting point, and, and then we would go from there.
Okay. I don't know that I necessarily at all agree with the fact that a child with an IEP would get the spot over a general ed student.
Well, we, if, if it was recommended, then it, it could be mandated by law. So, that, that's, in other words, if the committee recommends a program, we have to honor it.
I understand that. I just, I have an issue, because who's advocating for the general ed kid? Nobody, and that's my issue with it.
I'm sorry, Allison, do we already, don't we already do that if that's the case, whether it's budgeted or not? I mean, if, if it was at the IEP, and we would be mandated to do it, whether it's a budget item or not, we would have to do it.
That's correct.
Right, it's almost like, I feel like those spots should be for the gen ed kids, and if an IEP kid comes in, then you tackle it after that.
Because, yeah. I, I agree with the two of them, that it really, we shouldn't be holding those spots for the IEP kids. We should offer them to the gen ed kids, because they don't have, they're just as likely to, to need a program like that. It's just that they don't have anything on paper saying that they'd need a program like that. And it would be great if we could offer it to students who, this would really, this would really benefit them. There's, there's way too much going to college for the sake of going to college. I know many, many kids who the, who the Bosse's program, they are now successful in the career that they started at Bosse's. They went on to do more, but this ended up being their career.
We, we certainly could consider it. Again, this is the beginning of a discussion, and, and our best thinking at this point in time. So, Lee, why don't we price out, again, it's, it's not just the tuition, it's transportation, and, and that's a big driver there. And let's look at two spots earmarked for gen ed students, and we'll come back with that, Allison, and let's see how that impacts the budget one way or, or another. But I'm not, not necessarily arguing with you, I, I just, it, it, it's, it's not required. You know, we spend per pupil quite a bit of money on, on, on what I believe that, you know, are quality courses here. So, I, I think it's something that, you know, needs to be considered, you know. For one student, there are many other things you could do that maybe would impact twenty students. So, but certainly, we, we can revisit it.
And I, I would just want to make it clear that everyone understands, a student with an IEP, we would wholeheartedly, gladly, we have never, this board has never not supported something that's been brought to us for a student with an IEP. So, if that were to be the case, you know, we, we, we will, we are advocating for all the students. So, we would definitely approve that. So, I just wanted to, to make sure everyone understood that.
Okay. Just a couple more things, sorry. I see one security for Cottle after school hours, which is great, definitely needed. However, what about during school hours? Because we also need one for during, actually, I think we need one more for during school hours. But I'm really in favor for one after school also.
I, I think the thought process there was, you know, we have two, and, and the elementary students are much more contained. And then, we do have a large number of, of aides, many more than, than the middle high school. Just kindergarten, first grade, for example, and of course, there's an aide assigned to every class. So, we, we've increased a lot of the aides, we have some part-time monitors there. It certainly is something that could be considered. You know, we, we've always discussed, you know, two types of monitors. You know, and there are those who are very familiar with our students and nurturing, and, and, you know, are, are very effective at what they do. And then there are those that have law enforcement background. And if, you know, if there, you know, was a dangerous situation, have the background and the training to, to handle that. And, and we've always believed that a combination of the two was effective. You know, if a child is, is having a problem, and it's, you know, a social thing, and it's, you know, during lunch or recess, monitors that know the kids, you know, will bring that to the attention of a counselor, and, and we can support them accordingly. So, we've always gone with this philosophy of a combination is, is the best. But certainly, you know, we, we can take it under consideration and potentially look for an additional person at Cottle. I, I, you know, I know it would be welcomed.
I do feel that a combination is best. However, what we do have at Cottle that we don't have at the middle school, high school, is a classroom before you enter the, you know, before you get to the office or before you get to the security. So, really, a presence being there to make sure that those first couple of classrooms at the doorway are safe is, is needed. It's, it's not an option, it's, it's needed. And certainly, one for during after-school hours also with task. I know I bring my son to Bronxville after-school hours, even on Friday nights for basketball, and there is a security guard there. In the summertime, I've gone to bring my kids to camp to East Chester Middle School, there is a security guard there. And those security guards are really, you know, they're not there necessarily for the camp, they're there to protect the secretaries. Like, I was able to get to the camp part, I couldn't get anywhere near the actual school part without somebody stopping me. So, you know, I, I do think that a security guard for Cottle during the day also, as well as nighttime, is necessary because of those classrooms being so accessible by the front door. Also, I see one security guard for middle school, high school. And I know we're going to talk a lot about security next week, and trust me, I will be up here. But for budget purposes, I see one security guard for the middle school, high school. And Carl, actually, I had spoke to you earlier in February about this, that I would really like to see, in addition to that, two full-time hall monitors on each of the main floors that are there to sit throughout the day to monitor the kids who are in the hallway. I know when I went to high school in Pelham, we had one on each floor. You didn't move through those hallways without those two people knowing and saying your name and saying where you're going. It, you know, made students leery of behaving in ways that are not appropriate, that are dangerous, and just, you know, breaking the rules. We do have a lot going on at the high school. It's not just about shootings, it's about a lot of other things. You know, there's vaping, there's theft, there's a lot going on over there, over here. And if you had the hall monitors present in the hallway, permanent employees that we know, know the kids, know the basic schedule, know who's supposed to be where, that deters a lot of that. It, it would deter some bullying, it would deter vaping, it would deter theft. It really makes kids just feel like they are being held accountable for their behavior. And so, I would like to see two permanent hall monitors added to the budget. They're, and they're not expensive, they're, they're low-paid.
Yeah, you, you probably are aware, teachers do, by contract, three periods. It can be hall duty, sometimes it's study hall, per week. So, as you point out, I, I, you know, to people who know our students, people who the students respect in turn. So, what, what we will do is, we're, we're still in the process of, of setting up next year's schedule. It starts this early, believe it or not. Once the schedule is in place, then we see what teachers are free when. Probably, the best people for, for, for those assignments are teachers, and we currently do have many teachers, you know, but, but it's not consistent all day long. So, then maybe we can look at that and then fill in, fill in the periods where we don't have teachers with permanent hall monitors. So, it is definitely something we can take a closer look at.
Yeah, I really don't feel like it should be the teachers. It should be someone, the children respect the teachers, but also need to keep a good relationship with the teachers. The hall monitor, it's like, where are you going, Montal? I mean, I, I can still hear her saying to me, where are you going, Montalto? And, you know, I knew that whatever I was doing, whatever I was up to, I better be on task, because I was going to be in trouble if it wasn't. And, you know, that's the purpose of a hall monitor. And I honestly don't think I know of a high school that doesn't have hall monitors. You know, it's just someone, it's, it's the teacher. If you put the teacher in that responsibility, you're jeopardizing the relationship- the relationship between the teacher and the child. The hall monitor is there specifically to make sure that the kids are behaving in a way that they are expected to behave. That's my, my two cents anyway. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Allison.
Hello. My name's Harry Tucker. I think you all know me by now. Great idea with the hall monitors. I could tell you firsthand, there's issues there. So maybe if you don't do a hall monitor, you do security cameras, if that's easier. You don't have to pay, you know, security cameras benefits and stuff like that. And also, obviously, as you know, Cottle is dated, but the teachers, I think, do a great job brightening up those classrooms. But, you know, it's very, it's getting hard on her. I go there, my, my wife was the class mom this year, so she works a lot. So I was like a lot of class dad, believe it or not. And so I saw it firsthand. So back to the budget, a three percent tax increase, can you give us an idea like you did with the bond? What does that come out to for an average assessed home in Tuckahoe? What's the projected budget surplus for this year?
That, we did give you that one. It's the three eighty-five, less the two taxes that are coming up.
Okay. So it's only three eighty-five? Because I saw that the expenses were a million dollars less than budgeted. So the revenues came in a lot lower than expected. Don't we get to?
No, that covers the appropriation.
Can you go to the budget? I mean, the fund balance slide?
So the nine sixty-nine, eight twenty that we have to cover for this year's budget, that's the million dollars. And then what's left over is the three eighty-five.
So you're putting, so you took nine sixty-nine out last year?
Well, we didn't take it out. We had to cover it.
Right. And then you're, so you're adding back three eighty-five on top of that. So the fund balance, just so everybody's clear, seems to always go up every year. Twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve was three million. Now it's almost seven million.
And what I did this year is tighten the budget and the revenue side and the expenditure side. So my anticipation is those numbers will continue to shrink and shrink, and that's the intent.
Okay.
But we are increasing the appropriated fund balance to cover larger expenditures. So if we continue to decrease any surpluses that we may see, those numbers will have to be covered out of fund balance. And we're getting close to that point. And we won't be able to replenish them that easily unless we are using them only for one-time things.
Right. So the best thing to do is have a budget surplus of pretty much as close to zero as possible.
Which is difficult to do because of, right, right.
But the auditor says it should be two to four percent, right? So only that. Last year, we were way over that.
Right. So that's why we range it in.
Yep. All right. Want to point that out?
Okay.
So one of the things that we mentioned, because I'm in the audit budget committee, but I've been very busy, so I've been to a couple meetings, was the, the capital projects fund balance. So instead of having to go to the community and say, we need a million dollars to fix the football field, every year we take maybe a hundred grand and we put it to the side. So when we find out we need something fixed, we, I think we still had to ask the community if we can use it, but we already have it set aside. So I don't know if we ever thought about doing something with that, if we've talked about, you know, if the board wants to consider doing something like that, so we don't have to keep coming back.
It is something, but I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, the community also has to vote to create it. So we have to have a vote to create it. And then we'd have to, you know, put, you know, allocate. I'm all for it. I've talked about it. I, I've also served on the budget committee for many years. But I think right now with the timing, when we have, we're doing the bond and we have so much going on, I would just really like to get the bond and just make it as simple as possible because I'm, I'm just afraid if we put too much out there, it's, the timing isn't right for it. So this is my personal opinion, and we can have a conversation about it, and, and Lee could definitely advise us because I have been advocating for that for a long time for exactly the reason that you said. We know that the life of, of a turf field is ten years. It's not going to be a surprise in ten years when it has to be replaced. And I think it's a lot easier to ask the community for money when they see that you've been also preparing. You know, so we have, you know, we've saved a couple of million, but we need a couple of mil-, you know, and, and I think that goes a long way. So I agree with you. I think there's also a timing, like you have to, before you could put it on, I, 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 this was all the stuff that I learned when I was on the budget committee. How long is it?
It's, if you vote on it this year to create the reserve, you can spend it for another year. Next year, you can vote on it to spend it. So it would be another year later that you could spend it.
So is there a, is there a time period, let's just say if we wanted to put it on for May fifteenth, is there a time period that you would have to do that by?
It could be part of the budget.
It could.
Because that would be a vote.
Okay.
I mean, because we've been talking about it for three years.
We have.
And we keep hearing. And, you know, keep blinding it. Also, I remember we had a school lunch fund balance of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And our auditor said that was way too high. It should be close to zero, right? And we said, we're going to use that because we're going to, we're going to fix the cafeteria at Cottle. We're going to use that money to fix that. But now that we're not going to do that, where was that two hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So we're allowed to keep in our cafeteria fund, up to three months' operating expenses from the profits that we make from our school lunch fund. And we have been accumulating, we have about two hundred fifty thousand dollars in our fund. And since we're not doing a major renovation of our cafeterias, which we thought we would use that monies to supplement or utilize, we did plan to talk to our architects about some ideas to take those monies. And we've been telling the state for a couple of years to get exemptions from having to spend it immediately. We told them we would like to do some renovations of our cafeterias. And what we would like to do, when it makes the most sense in terms of the timing of the project, is take those monies out and do some improvements that we can do on a small scale to both cafeterias. Those monies can only be used for cafeterias. We can't use them for anything else. And we had planned all along to, in addition to what we normally do with those funds, is as well as to buy new equipment as it breaks down. And we always need some monies allocated for that. But the rest of the funds to do some improvements.
Sorry I'm taking so long. Also, we mentioned what a great special education program we have here. But yet we want to get a new director and pay a hundred fifty thousand dollars for that person. How many special education kids pay tuition to come here?
Good question. Eleanor or Lee, do you have the exact number?
I don't have it.
I want to say it's roughly in the, over twenty.
Okay. And a couple of other things. How do we set a new Cottle principal? I know that's not the budget, but the new Cottle principal?
We, we are in both administrative searches. We are in the final stages. And the board is, is prepared to meet candidates probably within a week. And part of our follow-up after this is for me to update them on, on both search, search processes. The, the final stage of the principal search was on one of our snow days. So we are rescheduled for tomorrow. And of course, the weather calls for more snow.
Nobody?
So we, we do have four finalists for the elementary principalship. And we're hoping to hold our, our interviews tomorrow.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
I had a question just involving that because for the special ed director, like I know, because you had mentioned there were twenty students, but were we planning on, like when designing that role, utilizing that person in different ways, not just for the IEP students? Was that, like what will that, I guess, look like? Because that is a, the only reason I'm asking, I'm getting texts from people down here about the same thing. So I figured, why not explain that?
There, there is a very thought, thoughtful, thoughtfully planned job description that Dr. McDonald and I worked on, that we certainly could post, I, I assume, on, on the website, maybe on the, the special education part of the website, so people would understand more. You know, we're getting very close to making an announcement and, and rolling out more details about the position. But no, the idea is that this person would serve students with disabilities, work very closely with guidance and, and psychologists, and all special education staff members throughout the district. You know, we, we, we've grown in many different ways. We never had summer programs before. Our two ABA programs run through the summer. Also, Dr. McDonald, I think, has done a fantastic job in, in bringing students back home to districts. You continue that trend. And also bringing in tuition students from, from new districts. But, but we think we could even do more outreach there. And, 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 you know, we, we do believe the position, someone solely dedicated to that would be a tremendous value to the, to the district. And, and, you know, the quality is there, but we think we can even do more.
And also to add to that cause, also in response to some of the concerns in the community, because I, I know that there was a lot of concern that we weren't doing enough in that area. So I think it's, it's also in response to that.
Yeah. We, we did, we did receive a lot of feedback. You know, Dr. McDonald, there are other things that need to happen in the areas of curriculum instruction. She, Dr. McDonald sets up all of our professional development for the year, not only on conference days, but after school. And, and I, I think we, we heard from our community and, and parents of children with disability that, you know, they would like one person. And, and I, I will also add this, that there, there is not a district in all of Westchester County that doesn't have one administrator solely dedicated to special education. No- nowhere will you find an administrator split. So I, I think, you know, with, with all of that consideration, that's how we arrived at the decision to place that in, in the budget and, and propose it to the community.
You know, I just wanted you to put it out there. Not that I'm against it at all. It's just that I think if people in the community don't have students with special needs or in, they kind of want to know, it's, okay, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars for this small amount of kids. So that's why I was just saying, it would be good for people to understand a little bit more about it.
Well, if, if the concern out there is financial, I, I think, you know, again, if you, and it's, it's, it's hard. You got to pay close attention. It's taken me many years to understand it. But as Ms. Lou went through the financials, I think there's a very strong financial argument to be made for this position. You see, you know, you see the fund balance. And I, I know we talked about, you know, ideally having, you know, a surplus of somewhere between two and four percent. It's exceeded that every year because we continue to bring in more tuition. And on the flip side, we continue to spend less because we're keeping our children home. And we're not just keeping them home because of finances. They deserve to be here if we can service them. There, there are some students where their needs are, are, are so specialized that we just simply don't have the program for everyone. But again, going from twenty-seven students sent out, an average of maybe eighty to a hundred thousand per pupil, and that was only six years ago, where today I believe we have seven students going out. Now that they need to go out, we don't have the programs for them. But, but think about, you know, that, that is, has really had a huge positive impact on the budget. And I think that's part of the reason, not, not the full reason, but part of the reason why you see such a healthy fund balance and, and surplus. And, and I think a director will continue. And, and in the interview process, we were carefully probing into, does this person not only understand disability and, and programs and, and quality special education instruction, but does the person understand the financial aspect of it? Because you do have to be knowledgeable of that as well.
All right. Lastly, just one, one last thing in regards to that. And this, again, it's not my view. It's just because I've heard concerns. With the non-tuition kids coming in and special ed, are we going to continue? Because I know we did this year, we brought them in based on, we're not adding classes. It's, we're filling the classes we exist.
Great, great question. Dr. M., you want to take that?
Yes. As a practice, we've never created a program for kids that aren't Tuckahoe kids. All right. So for example, one of the new classes that we opened this year are grade three, four, and five, verbal behavior classroom, was created because there were three Tuckahoe kids to need it. We brought one back to district. We had two aging in. That magic number of three of our own children, it is fiscally responsible to bring it in and create our program. And it is right for kids to be able to go to their own elementary school. And so once that happens, now you have a program. It can have up to eight children in it, right? So then you start to see, are there other children that would fit into that program? And that would benefit our children as well to have a few other members to their class. That class, like its predecessor, the K one-two program, is only Tuckahoe kids in its first year. People need to know the program's working, right? They need to see it. So we start getting referrals now for, for next year. The same with, we expanded this year a twelve-one-one class at Cottle. And so that has had kids enroll immediately this year because they, it existed in other grade levels before. Again, there are, if there are six Tuckahoe kids, you can have up to twelve in a class. I'm not saying we'll max it out to twelve. We'll put in what makes sense so our kids are still learning well. But it also provides that option to the other kids and does provide us that revenue. So just as an example for, for the funding, just this slide that was up, next year, we'll be paying out two hundred seventy thousand less. Some kids are aging out. We do pay for our kids up to twenty-one. Some are coming back, right? And we're expecting to bring in over a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So when you talk about that one fifty, there's four hundred thousand up on that page. It, it's going to be okay.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to put it, because I've heard a lot from the community, and I do agree with it. But I think explaining, and I've heard a lot about, oh, we're running out of space. Why are we bringing kids in? But that's why I wanted you to explain in that piece that we're really not, yes, absolutely. Well, yeah, it wasn't for me. I understood it. But I wanted other people who have asked to understand it.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Anyone else from the audience? No. Okay. So I think what we're going to do now is we're going to end our meeting. We are going to go back into executive session for brief, briefly. And, and that will be it. So thank you. We will meet again next week, March nineteenth at seven thirty. Thank you and good night.